Appreciate you all coming out this evening and at this time, I'd like you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance to America. Flag's right over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I do have a motion before me to allow four non-residents to speak if we need them to. Those names are Colin Moizel, Town Manager, Kate Fedoroff, Town Counsel, Rony Camille, Media Director, and Catherine Grony, Library Director. I have a motion on that to allow those folks to speak. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. I have a second. Motion in a second to allow these non-residents to speak if needed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. We'll go right into the special. Article number one, Transfer of Funds from General Stabilization. To see if the town will vote to transfer from General Stabilization Fund the following sums of money for the following purposes or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article one?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $688,180.65 from the General Stabilization Fund to the Police Department's salaries and wages for fiscal year 2025 as printed in the Finance Committee Handbook.
Second. Was there more to that explanation?
Yes.
Okay, someone else is gonna, okay. Okay, we have the motion in a second. Is there continued explanation? Sorry.
This article seeks to transfer $688,180.65 from the General Stabilization Fund to the Police Department's FY25 salaries and wages line to cover a court-ordered payment of back wages as a result of an arbitration decision against the town. Arbitration is a mutually agreed-upon dispute resolution process for collective bargaining units whereby disputes over discipline are heard by an independent arbitrator. This specific case deals with a police sergeant who was terminated in 2021 and ordered to be reinstated and paid back wages by the arbitrator. If this article fails, the town will need to have another special town meeting before November to make the transfer before the tax rate recap can be approved by the Commonwealth.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, Article one. Discussion, please.
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road.
Can you still hear me okay with that? I can.
I'm gonna read something here. I'm gonna vote in favor of this article, but I think it's important to give some background. Okay? So I've dug into a couple of documents.
How long do you expect this'll take?
Three minutes.
You got 'em.
Three and a half.
Three.
I tried to time it.
Got 'em.
Well, stop me.
Go ahead.
Does that count against me already?
You're 2:45.
All right, anyway. Transfer of $688,180.65 from General Stabilization Funds is to pay for the reinstatement of Sergeant Mark Bork with back pay after arbitration failed that his firing was not justified. In addition to the $688,000 settlement, Sergeant Bork was paid by taxpayers while on administrative leave from May 20, 2020 to November 21, 21st, 2021. Then he was fired. As calculated from Town Post Wage Reports, he received about $180,000 over that period of time plus health insurance benefits. It's about 20 grand a year. Two excerpts from legal documents seem to say it all. This post from a Union Post hearing brief, quote, "The internal investigator interviewed no other employees to determine whether Bork had been observed to be impaired. She never even checked. Moreover, the town never sought the opinion of a doctor, a nurse, pharmacist, or anyone qualified to discuss the medical issues involved in this case." That's from a union. American Arbitration Association, conclusion, based on the just cause standard, it is the town's burden to show preponderance of the evidence that the grievant was impaired by medications prescribed, and the town did not, in fact, could not satisfy the burden as requirements impaired or lack of fitness for duty because there was no evidence of any impairment or lack of fitness for duty. It is not enough that the town argues that there was some potential for impairment, drowsiness, excess sedation to satisfy that burden. It is of considerable significance that the grievant was never ordered to undergo a physical or psychological examination in connection with fitness for duty, leading considerable support to the finding that the grievant was fit for duty specifically during 2016 to 2020. Furthermore, the town did not uphold its obligation of proving by preponderance of evidence that the grievants violated federal, state laws, and Tingsborough Police Department rules or any other misconduct as alleged by Chief Howe and the Attorney and the Board of Selectmen. So after digesting the twists and turns of this arbitration, multiple select board lack of diligence were no fitness exam, no internal investigation, and the appearance of a cover-up of a court ruling in Sergeant Bork's favor only a day or two prior to firing him. As amised, the controlling majority of the three select board members and Chief Howe avoided an independent exam in interviews of cohorts because they did not think the results could be helpful to put Sergeant Bork out. The chief appeared to use his power arrogantly. Select Board Chairman Cahane appeared to facilitate the chief's desire.
Focus on the issue and not the individuals, please.
Okay. None of the select board members who made several errors of judgment have accepted responsibility. They say advice of counsel does not allow them to speak because of an ongoing lawsuit that could exceed the town's insurance coverage of $10 million. Ask, how much more could might be revealed? I suggest release the executive minutes and take responsibility for errors in judgment. Now Sergeant Bork has already been paid. The state requires the town budget to be balanced. Voting against Article one could damage our A-plus bond rating. I will hold my nose and vote yes.
Thank you for that discussion. Any further discussion, Article one. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article one as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry unanimous. I'm sorry, did I hear one voice? Okay. I'm gonna have to take that one more time because I, well, I need a two-thirds, but the easiest way to do a two-thirds, I'm gonna do this in reverse. All those opposed to Article one as printed in the special, please signify by holding up their hand with their pink ticket at this time. Okay. Purple, that's not pink at all. Lilac, we'll call it lilac. Thank you. All those in favor of Article one in the special, please signify by holding up your purple ticket at this time. Thank you. Moderator sees in excess of 50 and only counted one against, so that does pass by two-thirds. I now would like to entertain a motion to close the special town meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the special town meeting at this time, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Okay, start turning pages, folks. I'll turn one page. Article one, Report of the Town Officers and Committees, to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers and committees as printed or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article one?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article one as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. I have a motion and a second for Article one. Any explanation?
Yep. This article approves the annual town report, which is available at www.tingsboroughma.gov and in hard copy at Annual Town Meeting, Tingsborough Public Library, and the Town Hall.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion, Article one. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article two, Deposits to Stabilization Funds, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 from the following source to the following stabilization fund for the purposes hereafter specified. Do I have a motion on Article two?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article two as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. Okay. Explanation, please.
Mr. Moderator, Article two seeks to deposit of $150,000 from Certified Free Cash into the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, the purpose of which is listed in the article language.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion, Article two, Deposits of Stabilization Funds. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article three, Authorized Appropriations from Stabilization Funds for Fiscal Year 2026, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to expend up to the following amounts for the following stabilization funds for the following purposes or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article three?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article three as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This is an annual article that authorizes the town to expend a certain amount of money from stabilization funds during the year for the purposes described above.
And folks can see those figures, road stabilization fund, special ed stabilization fund, capital asset stabilization, and debt stabilization. Any discussion, Article three? Thank you, sir.
Billy Crawford, 83 Frost Road. I'm asking about the $200,000 of debt stabilization fund. I'd ask, how much is left in our debt stabilization fund after spending the 200,000?
Do we have that answer? Thank you.
This $200,000 will deplete the debt stabilization fund. Town meeting may remember, last year is the first time we put money into debt stabilization for the purpose listed here.
All right, thank you. I just want to point out that this, you'll see that, to fund the payment of debt service within the general fund for the middle school project. I want to remind everyone that this is a 30-year debt payment. I'd ask, will we be doing this again from debt stabilization?
Please, thank you, Colin.
The answer is unless town meeting and a subsequent town meeting deposits additional funds into debt stabilization, the answer is no, simply because after this vote today, there will be $0 in debt stabilization.
Okay, the next question is, last year, how much money did we put into the road stabilization from general funds?
Last year, the town used 800,000 from road maintenance, road stabilization.
No, how much did we put into road stabilization fund last year at town meeting? It was about 200,000 dollars.
He's asking from the operating budget.
Oh, we put nothing from the operating budget, but we spent from the general fund, which is Article six, 250,000.
Okay, and how much are we doing this year?
The general, Article six doesn't include any operating funds toward the roads program.
Okay, but we are spending 200,000 dollars on the middle school.
From debt stabilization.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, last discussion, Article three. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article three as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article four, Continue and Approve Revolving Funds, to see if the town will vote to establish, pursuant to the authority granted under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and One Half, fiscal year 26 spending limits for the following revolving accounts. If you expand in accordance with the Department of Following Funds, Section 5, Table of Authorized Revolving Funds of the Town's General Bylaw, or take any other action relative thereto, do I have a motion on Article four?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article four as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This article authorizes the annual expenditure limits for revolving funds shown above for certain town departments under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E, One Half, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30, 2026.
Thank you. Any discussion, Article four, Revolving Funds. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article four as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article five, Authorization of the Select Board Regarding Contracts in Excess of Three Years, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into lease/purchase agreements of up to five years to lease or purchase equipment for the town, said contracts to be subject to annual appropriations, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a typo? Says three years, and then it says five years. Is that accurate? Did we pick one?
It's in excess of three, but five is the max.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion. Motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article five as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. And I have a motion and a second. Explanation, please.
Mr. Moderator, this article would authorize the select board to enter into lease/purchase agreements for items including office equipment, vehicles, or other equipment. Massachusetts General Law requires town meeting approval to enter into a contract in excess of three years.
Any discussion, Article five. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article five as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article six, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to fund town expenses for fiscal year 26, which is July 1, 25 to June 30 of 26, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article six? Sorry.
Mr. Moderator.
You're all over me.
I move that the town vote to approve Article six as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. And we have motion and a second. Explanation or, please, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Moderator, Article six is the fiscal year 2026 appropriation of funds for the town of Tingsborough. This annual budget is a declaration of our town's priorities and a statement on how we choose to allocate the limited collective resources that exist. The operating budget enables the day-to-day operations of the town by paying for recurring expenditures for programs, services, employee salaries, rents, utilities, supplies, insurance, and debt service. The library, schools, Police Department, Fire Department, Council on Aging, and dozens of other town departments rely on this funding to provide services on a daily basis. The operating budget consists of local aid from the Commonwealth, our local taxes, property excise and business, and other fees collected by the town. All town activities not specifically directed to other accounts such as the sewer or ambulance enterprise funds are funded through this budget. As a result, most of the town's operating expenditures are paid through this appropriation.
Thank you for that explanation. Colin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a few slides, and I do recognize some familiar faces from our Budget Office hours, so apologies if you're seeing this for the second time, but we'll try to be quick. The following slides talk about the fiscal year 26 proposed budget. You'll note that the fiscal year 25 budget, which is the fiscal year we're currently operating in, was $49.1 million, and the proposed fiscal year 26 budget is $52.3 million. That represents a $3.2 million increase, or 6.5%. That increase includes the debt, the exempt debt, which we'll talk about on the next slide. If you eliminated that and looked simply at the operating budget, that's 3.6% increase over last year. The main budget drivers for this year's budget is the $900,000 to the general fund to reduce the exempt debt on the middle school. This is the million-dollar contribution that was agreed to as a part of the middle school approval. $900,000 comes from the general fund, which is what you're voting on in Article six, and $100,000 comes from the Lakeview lease revenue. Because that's outside of the general fund, it doesn't show up in this warrant article. Other budget drivers include contractual labor increases. As with all of our neighboring communities, we saw higher-than-normal health insurance increase on the employee benefit side. This year's health insurance increase was 17%. And the only real new item is to make a previously part-time administrative assistant that supported the Fire Department a full-time public safety admin assistant. That represents an increase of about $25,000. That position will now continue to support the administrative functions of the Fire Department as well as do public records requests for the Police Department. The exempt debt is the debt service payments that are outside of the general fund. These are the big projects that you're asked to vote on here and on the ballot. The most recent example, of course, is the middle school. It's exempt debt because it's outside of Prop. Two and a Half. Prop. Two and a Half is the law that limits the tax increases to 2.5% unless voters at town meeting and in election approve either this debt exemption, which is for specific projects like the middle school, or an override, which is not something that we're doing here in Tingsborough. In this current fiscal year, the budget that we're currently operating on, there were three items under our exempt debt, the THS roof and boiler project, as well as the middle school. In fiscal year 26, all of the exempt debt, with the exception, of course, of the middle school, drop off. In fiscal year 26, the total exempt debt service, the cost for the debt, is $2.9 million. When you take the million-dollar general fund contribution off the top, the balance that will be billed directly to taxpayers on top of the regular tax bill is 1.97 million. And just for reference, it was 1.83 million in fiscal 25, again, this fiscal year. I talked about the public safety administrative assistant. That position will be split 15 hours doing records in the Police Department and 25 hours in the Fire Department. The funding for the part-time administrative assistant has been included in the Fire Department's budget for the last three or four fiscal years, and so this year's increase is to cover that 15 hours over on the Police Department's side. There are also some structural changes to the budget, so if you look at the attachment, it looks like the facilities or public buildings line items have increased dramatically. That's the result of us moving the three custodial salaries out of the highways department and putting it into facilities. So this, last year, we fully implemented the Home Rule petition for Department of Public Works. Under the Department of Public Works, facilities is its own division, and so we thought it was important to show truly where tax dollars were being spent. In previous budgets, those three salaries appeared under the highway department because they're part of that collective bargaining unit, but that's not really where the staff time is. So just to make it obvious, we moved that to the facilities. There are no new positions as a result of that change. Last year, we started to show where your tax dollars go, and so I included two slides here that look almost identical to the slides that we presented last year. As with all of our neighboring communities and in the Commonwealth, 67% of the budget is spent on education. That represents the cost to operate the Tingsborough Public Schools, as well as our assessment to Greater Lowell Tech. 1.4% of the budget is on debt. This is debt within the general fund, so this doesn't include the exempt debt. 1.4 is well below where the best practices recommend you be, and certainly well below the limits that we set ourselves in our financial policies. As you'd expect, public safety is the next biggest category, followed by Health and Human Services, Public Works, General Government, and Land Use and Community Development. And the last budget slide just shows where our staff are. Obviously, based on the budget, you can tell that 71% are on the school side. Public safety is the next biggest group, followed by Public Works, General Government, Health and Human Services, and Land Use and Community Development.
All set?
That's it.
Thank you. We have before us Article number six. Are there any articles that folks would like to take on the room before we have a motion and a second on the floor for Article six? Anything you want to take on your own, or can we pass it as it sits? Come on up. We won't discuss, we'll just give you, you'll have to give me the article name, there's no line items.
I just, a question about having an additional comment about the cost of the Greater Lowell Tech to the town as well. That was significant. I didn't think you mentioned that.
Is that a line item in here that I could take separately?
I don't want to change anything, I just wanted them to mention.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my apologies.
The additional cost of it to the town.
Okay.
Yes, I'm forgetting the exact number here.
So is that answered?
No, I'll answer right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
That's all right.
So the Greater Lowell Tech assessment this year, which is not something we have control over, is 16% increase over last year. It's a combination of factors. The assessment is based on your enrollment, but most notably, it also includes the increased transportation cost as well as debt service. So similar to how we do exempt debt here, when they do big projects there, it's funded through debt service, and so even if our enrollment stayed the same, if their debt service number increases, that obviously gets passed on to its member communities. Thank you, Mr. Crawford, I forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can I just make a comment? It's over here.
Hello, yeah, please.
Yeah, so, so that's a big, that's a big increase, so if you want to contact Colleen Gary or Senator Kennedy to advocate to change those formulas, please do so. We could use all the help we can in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Article six. Hearing none, all in favor of Article six as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article seven. compensation of elected officials, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the Master and the Laws as amended for fiscal year 26, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article seven?
Mr. Moderator.
Please.
I move that the town vote to approve Article seven as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Article seven. Any explanations?
Mr. Moderator, this article requests approval of the stipends of elected officials as presented in the Finance Committee Guidebook. This article approves the stipends but does not allocate additional funding. The funding to cover these stipends is included in the appropriation approved by Article
Thank you. Any for, any discussion, Article seven. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article seven as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article eight, Transfer of Funds from Free Cash, to see if the town will to transfer from free cash the following sums of money for the following purposes or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion, Article eight?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article eight as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Funding turned back from departments in prior fiscal years returns to the undesignated fund balance, referred to as free cash. This funding requires a new town meeting vote to authorize a new use of the funds in a following fiscal year. This article seeks town meeting approval of the use of the funds as described for the purposes described above.
Thank you. Any discussion, Article eight. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article eight as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does carry. Article nine, Borrowing and Appropriation, Capital Improvements for Fiscal Year 26. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and borrow the sum of $487,863, and that the town be authorized to accept any available grant funds for the purpose of funding the following items or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article nine?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote that $300,000 is appropriated for the schematic design of a new fire station, and that $187,863 is appropriated for the exterior building envelope improvements at the police station, or the Police Department, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow $487,863 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1 or 7.7, or any other enabling authority and issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. That the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the select board is authorized to take any action other, any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this product, project.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion, Article nine.
Need a second?
Second.
Yep, come on down. Oh, a little more, I'm sorry, a little more?
No, need a second.
We didn't get the second?
No.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Come on down. Sorry about that. Procedural issue, step right up.
Al Stan, 30 Will at ILF. Those of you who have seen me up here before, supporting anything we can do to get behind public safety, to get them some new facilities. We're at a point right now, we take a couple bites of this apple every couple of years, try and get something done. I'd like to really see us move forward with this. If, for anybody who's been at the past few town meetings, we had to buy a new piece of apparatus recently. We live in New England, you drive by the firehouse, we're leaving our toys outside. It's not really great for the investment overall, so it's kind of pennywise, dollar foolish in the long run there. So I'm 100% behind this to get a, especially new fire station design and get this thing moving. They're not getting any cheaper. Work for a neighboring department, it's getting real expensive to build one. So love to see everybody support this and whatever comes out of it and moving forward because tax dollars aren't well spent leaving this stuff outside. And lastly, you know, your biggest investment is in the employees, and if you give them the right facility to operate out of, you're gonna get an awesome level of service, you're gonna get a lot of their free time maintaining this set equipment and stuff because it's the best job in the world and they'll give you everything if you support them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Any further discussion, Article nine. Hearing none, all those in favor of Article nine as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that does pass unanimous. Article 10, Appropriation, Ambulance Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Year 26. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the select board to operate the ambulance enterprise for fiscal year twenty-six. Do we have a motion on Article Ten?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Ten as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
And I have a second?
Second.
Now, write explanation, please.
The purpose of this article is to fund the ambulance enterprise fund. The fund is supported by fees collected through ambulance charges. The fire chief and select board establish the total expenses of the department, including debt service, direct and indirect expenses. Indirect costs are associated with general government costs and fringe benefits that are related to the operation of the ambulance service, and are expensed through the general fund or operating budget.
Thank you. Any discussion? Article Ten. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Ten as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Eleven. Appropriations Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year twenty-six. See if the town vote to raise or appropriate, or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to be expected expended by the sewer commission to operate the sewer enterprise fiscal year twenty-six, as follows. And you see the dollar figures down below. Do we have a motion on Article Eleven?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Eleven as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Yes, the purpose of this article is to fund the sewer enterprise fund. The fund is supported by sewer usage charges. The sewer rate is set by the sewer commission, and is established based on the total expenses of the department, including debt service, direct and indirect expenses, and the use of sewer services by residents and businesses. Indirect costs are associated with general government costs and fringe benefits that are related to the operation of the sewer department, and are expensed through the operating budget.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion of Article Eleven? Come on down.
Take like three minutes. Jason Long, twelve parking lane. Regarding the funding for the sewer department, I just want to inform people here who don't know about combined sewer overflows occur when capacity of sewer systems exceed typical during rainfall events resulting in discharge of untreated raw sewage into the stormwater of the Merma, into the Merrimack River. Dispressing environmental concern poses significant risk to public health, aquatic ecosystems, and overall quality. In all surrounding towns, stormwater of raw household and raw business sewage are pumped through a single pipe system known as a combined sewer, directly directing sewage to Lowell Treatment Plant. However, when precipitation events overwhelm the system like today, excess flow is released directly into the Merrimack River, carrying it with a cocktail of pollutants, including bacteria, viruses, personal hygiene flushed items, oils, sediments of result, sediments of all resulting in degradation of aqua, aquatics, I'm nervous.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine.
Aquatic habits through devastating algae blooms and increased waterborne disease affecting humans and pets along the river. Addressing the issue of combined sewer overflow is requires a collaborative effort from policymakers like yourselves, but mainly the public, people sitting here in the room today, to protect water infrastructure and adopt solutions that protect our local drinking water and resources. And I'm sure if this is possible because it's an enterprise fund, but Mr. Moderator, what I'm proposing tonight is that we add an amendment to terminate Phase Three and Phase Five sewer expansion through amendment through Article Eleven, based on factual reported data available that anyone here can go look and find out. Here are some facts from the last five years. You can go look them up while you're waiting tonight for the next articles. In 2020, nine hundred million gallons of raw sewage released into American Merrimack River. 2021, eight hundred and twenty-three million gallons. 2022, three hundred and eleven million gallons. Dry year, no water, don't use anything, no fires. 2023, two billion with a B, two billion gallons of raw sewage into the river. Last year, almost one billion gallons of raw sewage into the river. That's approximately five billion gallons of raw sewage since 2020. That does not include partially treated sewage, which precludes releases as facilities need to flush what they're already holding. Manchester's been working on a project separates sewer systems to stop the overflow based along, a long-term plan in nineteen ninety-nine from the EPA. Right now, that city is in year five of that twenty-year plan. Took twenty years to get that going. Tingsborough's Betterment Study was done in nineteen ninety-eight under the guise of environmental betterment. However, Tingsborough is pursuing the opposite, adding raw sewage to the already overburdened treatment plants through Phase Three and Five. Let's partner with our neighbors upstream and downstream, whereas Manchester and Lowell are funding projects to separate the systems and make the river healthier, not more polluted. During last week's meet the candidates, the sewer commissioner was asked very clearly what his biggest challenges are over the next three years. He clearly stated that Phase Three and Five are his biggest challenges, and he's not sure if they can get done due to funding. As well, a business proposal on Middlesex Road cannot move forward because of their request of a three hundred thousand gallon in volume that the system cannot support now. The capacity of the water treatment plants are inadequate. As we sit here tonight, the river is being grossly contaminated by all of these plants as we speak, as I speak, in mass volume, in real time. You can go look. Lowell is doing the same thing. Please vote to include amendment to the sewer department warrant Article Eleven to once and for all terminate the unnecessary, unwarranted environmental disaster of disgust that Phase Three and Phase Five expansions will add to the Merrimack River, that a department in our town is willingly continuing to seek approval for and pursue while very knowing the facts stated prior. We are better than this, Tingsborough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will certainly pass this along to the sewer. We can't, of course, add dollars to this, and you know that. But this certainly will be passed along to sewer, because we're all reading about it. If you're reading the Lowell Sun, we know that, we know it's an issue. It's got to be dealt with.
So with the Betterment Grant, can that Betterment be reappropriated to-
That I'm not aware of, yeah.
I just want to point out, Tingsborough, and I see our sewer administrator in Brian Martin, I do not believe that the town of Tingsborough has any combined sewer lines. I think that we, they're all separated. There's no, you mentioned combined sewer in the beginning where it's stormwater and sewer. I don't, we don't have that in Tingsborough. Mr. Martin, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Brian.
That is correct. What he's referring to is mostly the, the city of Lowell dumps raw sewage into the river at high rain events. Obviously, some sewage from Tingsborough goes there, all our sewage goes there. But Tingsborough's system is, is not combined. It's solid, and we have separation of sewage-
Speaking of a heavy water event, you hearing this? Right outside? Go ahead, didn't mean to interrupt. It's pouring right now.
So I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Any further discussion? Article Eleven, while it's pouring. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Twelve. Transfer of Funds from PEG Fund. See if the town will vote to transfer the sum of a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars from the PEG Fund to the general fund for the following purposes, or take any other action relative thereto. Who's PEG? No, what's the, who's this PEG? Do we have a motion on Article Twelve?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve, vote to approve Article Twelve as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Article Twelve. Explanation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the PEG, Public Education Government Channel-
There we go.
-program, it's not a woman-
Okay.
-is supported by franchise fees selected, collected by the town from cable providers. This article transfers a sum of that money from the PEG Fund to the general fund to cover petty expenses such as salaries.
Thank you. Any discussion? Article Twelve and PEG. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Twelve as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Thirteen. Appropriations. Community Preservation Committee Fund. To see if the town will vote to, will vote a sum of money to be appropriated or reserved from estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for fiscal year twenty-six. With each item be considered a separate appropriation for the payment of administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, debt service, community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses as follows. You see them below there. Do we have a motion on Article Thirteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Explanation, please.
The Community Preservation Committee CPC recommends how funds should be spent or set aside for future spending among the allowable categories of A, open space, two, historic preservation, C, affordable housing. In addition, a maximum five percent may be spent on administrative expenses by the CPC. Town meeting may either approve or reduce the recommended expenditures, but cannot add to them. Tingsborough receives state matching funds from the Commonwealth for several of projects recommended this year.
Thank you for that explanation. Discussion of Article Thirteen. Hearing none. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Thirteen as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Fourteen. Approve Prior Year Bills. To see if the town will vote to approve payment on the following bills, which were incurred during a previous fiscal year, FY twenty-four. Do we have a motion on Article Fourteen?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation, please, of Article Fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, bills incurred in a previous fiscal year cannot be paid by the town until they have been approved by town meeting. This article seeks to pay two bills that were incurred during fiscal twenty twenty-four. These bills will be paid out of the existing FY twenty-five budget and do not represent new appropriations.
Thank you for that explanation. Discussion, please, of Article Fourteen. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does pass unanimous. Article Fifteen. Street Acceptance. Riverbend Road and Faling Street. To see if the town will vote to accept the layout of certain townways below described, made by the select board, and other enabling statute filed in the office of the town clerk, with the plans there mentioned and referred to, for a more particular description as follows. Do I have a motion on Article Fifteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Fifteen as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Explanation, please.
This article asks town meeting to formally accept Riverbend Road and Faling Street as public roads. These roads have been fully surveyed, reviewed by the engineering department, and following a public hearing, recommended for acceptance by the select board. If approved, these roads will become public ways under the jurisdiction of the town.
Thank you for that explanation. Any discussion? Article Fifteen. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Sixteen. Master and the Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five-C and a half. See if the town, Tingsborough, will vote to accept the Master and the Laws, Fifty-Nine, Section Five-C and a half, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under Master and the Law Fifty-Nine, Section Five, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and to provide that the additional exemption shall be up to one hundred percent of the personal exemption, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning after July first of twenty-five, or take any other action relative thereto, we have a motion on Sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five-C and a half, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Five, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and provide an additional exemption up to one hundred percent of the personal exemption, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July one, twenty twenty-five. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Explanation, please.
Yes, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts allows exemptions to qualified persons that help to defray the amount of property taxes to be paid. Each exemption has requirements that the application must meet in order to be eligible. This article provides that the town grant an additional exemption above the statutory amount, not to exceed one hundred percent, provided that an applicant cannot pay less than what was paid in the preceding year on the property.
I have explanation. Any discussion? Article Sixteen. Thank you. Come on up.
Definitely in favor of this, by the way. The Board of Assessors, I just want to make sure, I know we talked about it, I think we should tell everyone else that they are in favor of this.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Go ahead, Colin, if you want to-
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Crawford. This was an article put forward by the Board of Assessors to the select board and thus to town meeting. This is a local option statute, which is just a law in Massachusetts that you don't have to follow unless your legislative body, in this case, town meeting, accepts it. What this does is says that if you're currently receiving, say, a one thousand dollar exemption, which means you qualify for it, by adopting this, the town can increase that by up to a hundred percent, which is what we've recommended, so an additional thousand dollars off of your real estate. So it's, you've got to qualify, we've mentioned the categories. This doesn't reduce the revenue that the town receives. Tax exemptions are just picked, the difference is picked up by other taxpayers.
Any further discussion? Article Sixteen. Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That does carry. Article Seventeen. Zoning Amendment. Section Eleven. Definitions. See if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, specifically Section Eleven thereof, entitled definitions, by adding the text below shown in red bold font, and deleting there from the text below shown in strike-through, or take any other action relative thereto, we have a motion on Article Seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article Fifteen-
Seventeen.
I'm sorry.
Quite right.
It says fifteen in here, okay. Article Seventeen, as printed in the Finance Committee Guidebook.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Explanation, please, for Article Seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, this article seeks to, seeks approval of certain amendments to the town zoning bylaw, specifically Section Eleven, which is in the definition section. The intent of this bylaw is to clarify ambiguous terms and clean up old language.
I'll also say, being on the Board of Appeals, we had a couple members that worked very hard on this. This has been going on for a couple of years, and I applaud their efforts. Any discussion? Article Seventeen, please.
I'm not opposed to this article either. Okay. But, but I do always like to put a point-
Please.
-in town meetings. There's twenty-two pages of this, you can't expect us to read this and know what the hell we're reading.
You didn't just get this today, Billy.
No, but I still don't know what the hell it says, to be honest with you. Okay? Because it's very hard. So it's only the red part we're discussing, but I always like to ask this question. Is there anything in here that's going to change the bylaws, or make the rules more stringent on anybody, or add fees? Are we changing anything, or are we just changing the wording? Last time you said just the wording.
Sure. I'm just looking to see if any of the board-
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
I was on the zoning bylaw review committee and spent an awful lot of time going through this. There are no material changes to any of these, nothing that impacts current zoning. It's merely clarification of definitions. We had a lot of areas in our bylaws where there was no definition at all, and it caused